Good evening, everybody. I will call to order the city council meeting for January 29, 2024. Ms. Rush, if you will do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson.
Here.
Mayor Proten Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Parry.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Thank you so much. And tonight, we have a workshop on our comprehensive plan and land development code. I will turn it over to Community and Economic Development Director Jessica Garner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. This is hopefully an informative and succinct presentation. We're going to walk you through a few topics that we think or we hope are of interest to you. They certainly are to the community. And hopefully, this is a little bit of education. And we're here also to answer any questions. So this will be a presentation that is going to be facilitated by myself, by Rob Smetana, who's our planning manager, and then Josie Sook is also here to offer support or answer questions if you have anything along the way. So our basic agenda is pretty brief here. We're going to do introductions, which we've kind of already done, but everybody will also get up and introduce themselves to you. We're going to talk a little bit about the Community and Economic Development's long-range planning and development review divisions. Those are two divisions within essentially five that we have within Community and Economic Development. I'm going to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan, the history, the purpose of it, why we do it, and walk you through a little bit of the versions that we've seen here in Arvada over time. We'll talk a little bit about the sub-area plans that have come from the comprehensive planning process. And then we're going to jump into the land development code. We'll do an overview of it. We'll talk about what's in it. I know this is, it is thoroughly fascinating. It's very interesting when it's applied to a project, but sometimes on its face can be a little dry. So we're going to do our best to kind of walk you through the basics on it. And then Q and A for anything, any questions that may come up. Obviously, we'll take questions along the way, but I would recommend if you walk through this with us, it may answer some of your questions as we go. But if not, feel free to ask. So this is our mission statement. We've had this for a number of years. Our future of Arvada's prosperity and quality of life will be influenced largely by the city's ability to ensure development meets design values, safety requirements, infrastructure needs, and supports the local economy to implement the community's vision. It's a great mission. I love it. And within Community and Economic Development, we essentially have two, what I call branches of planning. We have long-range planning, where essentially this is where we have staff that are focused on our comprehensive plan. They're focused on our long-range planning projects, like our sub-area plans. Really, a lot of the things that come from visioning and strategy and take a little bit of time to get to, often you're going to find our long-range planning staff focused on that. Our development review team, they are really focused on a lot of our current planning issues. So projects that are coming in the door, you know, zone change requests, conditional use permit, a variance, just a building permit. We're looking at all of those things, and that's typically happening within development review. So just to break that down a little bit, they are very different jobs. I can do both. Most of our planners do both. Some of us have preferences for what we like to focus on, but each one really takes a lot of time and attention. I'm going to turn it over to Rob Smetana, and he'll talk a little bit more about the comprehensive plan itself.
All right. So the comprehensive plan is kind of our big vision for how the community should proceed and look within a foreseeable timeframe. And so one of the things it does is establishes the city's land use pattern. And it does that based off of a number of different elements that are part of the comprehensive plan, but all feed together really to develop the community's vision moving forward. And it does set the stage for the development, for development regulations and standards in the land development code. And it also guides the city's thoughts on funding capital improvement projects that are identified in the plan. Typically, we update the comprehensive plan about every 10 years, and I'll walk through a little bit of history of that, so you can see that. The last one, we, the last version that we are currently working under was adopted in 2014. And we hope to start a new one, an update, next year. So in the city's history, we've had seven different comprehensive plans. We had kind of a bunch of them jammed together there at the beginning of our comprehensive planning history. And then for the last four decades, we've basically done one every 10 years. And this graphic just basically shows how it's progressed over, how the comprehensive plan has progressed over time, from a very kind of land use-centric plan to one that started to incorporate transportation, one that also then started to talk about design elements. And then our most current one also talks about economic development and vibrant communities in terms of parks and open space and utilities as well. So the comprehensive plan is that large overarching kind of view of the city as we move forward and where the community envisions the city moving over a specific timeframe. And it is the guiding document for the development of the city and the city's planning areas. And then the LDC kind of falls under that as the level of regulation, where the comprehensive plan is again, is a guiding document. And then these together establish the guidelines, standards, and regulations of the land use within the city. And Arvada is a little unique in that our land development code actually ties itself back to the comprehensive plan. And we have this, the statement that's in the last bullet here, is actually in the LDC. So when considering amendments to the LDC text and/or maps, so any rezonings, the Planning Commission and City Council shall pay reasonable regard to the policies, sorry, policies and goals of the comprehensive plan. So we really use it for actually a little more than a guiding document. We actually tie land use decisions that come out of the land development code to the comprehensive As I mentioned earlier, there's a number of elements to the comprehensive plan that look at growth and economic development, multimodal transportation, vibrant communities and neighborhoods, and then we have a plan implementation and monitoring chapter. And all of those elements then feed into the land use map, which is kind of shown on the right here, that guides our land use policies for the city. After we adopted the land development code in 2020 and remapped the city to follow the land development code, we did make a commitment that we'd start to look at those mixed, the areas that we zoned mixed-use development that were shown in the comprehensive plan for mixed-use development. We wanted to look at those in a little more detail. So we started our sub-area planning process. And so that's kind of a little bit more fine-grained look in terms of guiding documents than the comprehensive plan. And it helps bridge that gap between the comprehensive plan and the land development code as it relates to those areas that are zoned mixed-use. So we've so far adopted three of those, and we're hopefully going to start on another one of those here soon. The three that we have adopted are the Newtown area, kind of south of their tracks to I-70, the northwest Arvada area around Candellus and Leiden Rock, and then the Square Lake Plan, which was a joint effort with Adams County. And that's on kind of the far southeast portion of the city. And we're hoping to start one here soon on the Rolston Road corridor, generally between about Oak and Ward Road, looking at those commercial areas. We've actually got a good mix of commercial, some senior housing. We've got some Jefferson County property there. We've got some Apex property. And it's an area of the city that's getting a little older. So we'll be looking at that hopefully, again, starting this year. I'm going to transition now into the land development codes. So from the comprehensive plan, we develop the regulations as they relate to the land development code and the official zoning map of the city. And this is the document that we primarily use in the development review process. So the comprehensive, I'm sorry, the land development code breaks the city into zoning districts, of which we have seven different types of zoning districts, everything from parks and open space to residential with a number of districts having different density requirements, mixed-use districts that have different contexts in terms of density and intensity and uses and heights. We've got our Old Town District that governs the Old Town area. We've got a couple of commercial zone districts of different scales and again, and a number, a couple of different industrial districts of different scales. And then we also have a planned unit development zoning district, which is a district that kind of is a negotiation between the city and a developer to create the standards for that particular parcel of land. And those regulations in the end may or may not follow the land development code. But that's a district that we have tended to move away from to those standard districts that you see here, because that gives the city a clear direction in terms of what uses are allowed, what the densities are, what the design elements should be versus negotiating everything with the development. There are certainly times when that's appropriate, and there are other times when it's better to stick with the true regulations that everybody understands. In terms of design and development standards, each district is unique in those standards in terms of the uses that are either allowed, have some type of limitations on them, or are conditional. And some of those, you know, elements can be business use of the home, short-term rentals, whether a zone district allows some kind of limited commercial or is all residential. All of that's established within the land development code. The code also has a section that really deals with the layout of site, moving through from streets to setbacks, to lot coverage, to building height. We have development standards that talk about parking and landscaping, fencing, signs, wireless communications. And then we have a design section that talks about articulation of buildings and 360-degree architecture, so that you have architectural diversity around all four sides of a building, exterior materials, and things like accessory dwelling units.
Okay, this is, this is a request we want to ask. I know that the first time we tried to show this video upstairs in a council session, we couldn't get the sound to work. We've gotten the sound to work, so I wanted to ask the council, would you like to watch this video again? We've already shown it to you. If you would, we're happy to play it. If not, we're also happy to show people where it is on our website. Okay. And it's three minutes, so hopefully it won't take too long. Thank you.
Lots of thought and planning take place first. In Arvada, proposed developments must go through a rigorous three-step process to be certain they're in compliance with the city's rules and regulations. This is true for all new developments, including residential subdivisions, multifamily units, or commercial buildings. This meticulous review helps ensure development projects are compatible with the variety of services and amenities available to the community, which help make Arvada a safe and welcoming place. Step one is pre-application. Two is the formal application. And three is the review of the application. Each step takes time and can be different depending on the project. During pre-application, developers submit a concept plan and description of their proposed project. They attend a pre-application meeting, where they learn about all the types of review and preparation that their particular project needs. For example, does it impact traffic? Are there height limits or floodplain issues? Does it require rezoning? Is a neighborhood meeting required? These and other factors determine how long the review process will take. At the end of this step, a city planner provides a checklist of documents that the developer needs to submit. It can include things like plans, reports, legal documents, or other paperwork. And if a neighborhood meeting is required, it must take place before the next step, which is formal application. During the formal application process, the developer compiles all the required documents with the help of its planning, engineering, and legal team, and submits it to the city. Step three, development review, may include layers of review from many city teams, such as planning, engineering, utilities, and parks. If the project meets all the criteria as outlined in Arvada's land development code, it may be approved by city staff. But certain projects will go on to the Arvada Planning Commission and a city council for more reviews. Along the way, some public hearings may be required. An example is when rezoning is needed for a proposed development. Once a project receives final approval, it's ready for construction. During this phase, there are still plenty of regulations that need to be followed and permits that need to be issued. Arvada's development review process is designed to make sure that proposed developments comply with the city's rules and regulations before any new project is approved. And because each development is unique, the formal review process can be different for each project. It's easy to see why new developments can take time to be built.
Thank you for your patience, so that we could go through that again. I think it's beneficial to the public. I'm happy to, I would share that every day if it made a difference and made somebody's process a little bit simpler and they understood what to expect with it. We just wanted to lead off our development review discussion with that, with that video, so we can give you an overview. And then Rob is going to get into a little bit more of the meat and potatoes of that, just so you have a little bit more of an idea of the types of applications that we've seen. So, thank you.
So yeah, I'll jump back in here on the types of approvals. And I know you've, you've talked about these in the past, but we do have the administrative process, which is staff-level reviews and approval by the director. And then we have the public hearing, or quasi-judicial process, which requires Planning Commission to make a recommendation to council, council to make a final decision, or in some cases, they, a project may go to the Board of Adjustment, but still a quasi-judicial case. And all of those processes have approval criteria within the land development code on which decisions are based. Basically, we have four types of common applications. The most common right now is the administrative approval process. It's a property that has the correct zoning, the use that's proposed is permitted, they meet all the development standards of the land development code. It's something that we can review and go through that checklist and say, okay, it checks all the boxes, and therefore, we can approve it administratively. Ones that you've seen most recently, conditional use permits. And that's, I think, most of the time, you've seen them in the context of residential development in mixed-use zoning districts. And that is a quasi-judicial piece that requires a Planning Commission recommendation and in the council to make that decision based on the criteria. In that instance, is it appropriate to have residential development in a mixed-use district that could or that may have, or may not have an impact on the commercial environment in which is in the area? A little less common are major modifications, but I know you have seen some of those recently. A good example, in the past year or so, maybe it was the In-N-Out hamburger site at 52nd and Wadsworth, where they had to ask for some, some major modifications that made sense in the context of where that site was located. And that's part of the criteria that you look at, is to whether to grant one of those modifications, is to say, is this change to the land development code appropriate, given the context or the use of that particular development site? And then least common is an appeal of a director's decision, and honestly, we haven't had any of those recently. In terms of the review, what is being reviewed? All those elements that you see there, we look at everything from site design, what's happening above ground with the building and landscaping and parking, to everything that's below grade. What utilities do they need? Do they need to relocate utilities? Do they need to upsize utilities as part of a development? And do they need to widen any streets or dedicate any right-of-way? Those are all taken into account during the development review process. And again, if, if we can check all the boxes in the land development code at the administrative level, that can be approved, those projects can be approved by the director. We, of course, collaborate with all of our internal agencies and a number of outdoor, outside agencies, like CDOT, like a separate water district. We have plenty of those. We have ditch companies that we coordinate with if they're impacted by a development. So we do a lot of coordination in that review process. And that review process can be several iterations of giving comments to the applicant, they resubmit, we give comments back again. We try to review, or our goal is to review cases three times, get through the process in three reviews. We're not always successful at that, but that's kind of our goal and still strive to get through that as far as we can. One of the meetings that was described in the video is the pre-application meeting. And that's when we do have an applicant, just somebody who comes in and says, hey, I have an idea that I want to build a project on this particular piece of property. Can you tell me what I need to do? And so with that, we ask for hopefully, a hand-drawn sketch, anything from a hand-drawn sketch to something that's a little more engineered, something that gives us an idea of what the applicant is looking to develop on a site. And then we get with our team, we actually meet with them, go around the table and talk about what issues there may be with a particular case, what application types are necessary, and what that review process could look like, whether it can be administrative or require some type of public hearing with that, with the case being, you know, conditional uses or rezonings or annexations. If there is a quasi-judicial element to it, every case requires a neighborhood meeting in that instance. And that's a meeting that's held by the developer, but the city team is there to answer any procedural questions. But we rely on the developer to give a presentation, have interactions with the neighbor, with the neighbors and neighborhood, and hopefully revise their plan based on any neighborhood feedback they get. And we do have set distances for that meeting to, the meeting notice to be sent out, depending on the size of the project. Generally, if it's under a five-acre site, there's a mailing notice distance of 1,000 feet. If it's over five acres, it jumps to 1,500 feet. So they would notice all property owners within that radius of the neighborhood meeting. And that also holds true for the public hearings as well. So that's, those same neighbors get the notice as a public hearings. In other instances, we do suggest there be neighborhood interaction. Even with an administrative case, we require a notice to be sent out to surrounding property owners, those same radius, that same radius, to let them know at least there's an application in process. We give them the developer's contact information. So if there are any questions or concerns, they can have that interaction with the developer as part of the process, even if it's administrative.
So as city staff, we like to provide consistency and accuracy, and we don't want to have our developers or any of our applicants that are going through this process to, we don't want to waste their time. So we, we really do try to set a high bar for how long it takes for us to get back comments and the development review process timeline in general. You can see, looking at the time on the left, the average time for review has increased over time. There are a number of reasons why. Some of it I can't explain because I haven't been here. So I'm going to be spending some time in 2024, trying to understand where have we had potential breakdowns, or what can account for the amount of time that it takes for us to get this review completed. But the one thing I will offer you is that it's a, it's really, it's, this is a process that we engage in with the applicant. If the applicant takes six weeks or six months to get us back resubmital, that's just the time it takes. We can't force them.
Sorry, we have a clarifying question. Councilmember Parry?
Thank you. Just clarifying that the one on the right says weeks, but we're just wanting to clarify on the left is it days or weeks?
Sorry, those are, those are weeks on the left.
Okay, thank you.
Days. I'm so sorry. And I didn't mean to yell. Yes, those are days. Sorry.
Okay. So average time for review is days and average weeks is weeks?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Thank you very much.
So, so same holds true. You can see that those numbers have gone up over time. Some of that can be attributed to the fact that a lot of the easier, lower-hanging-fruit greenfield development, those opportunities are largely gone. And we are dealing with more complicated sites where it requires more coordination with the different departments, with utilities, with public works, parks and recreation, to make sure that we are kind of dealing with the issues that we need to deal with and that we're getting back the information to the applicant so they can proceed. Some of it is staff turnover. We've lost a lot of staff. We've gained a lot of new staff. And as engineers and planners and everybody are kind of coming together, it takes some time to figure out, understanding our code, unpacking the requirements, making sure that we have all of our processes in place. So it takes time, but we're going to be focused on this in 2024. I've mentioned this several times, that we really want to have a focus on customer service and truly understand where some of those holdups are so that we can reduce, reduce those lag times.
Can I interrupt you real quick? I just want to reiterate how important it is to do that. So the number one thing I've heard from the industry is this is their number one problem. It's lack of predictability and then the pace at which stuff goes. And it doesn't have ramifications just for them. Every week you see on here, there's a cost associated with that. Somebody has money that they've got borrowed, or they've got staff time that's being burned up for these times. And, you know, we, we talk about these days, it's politically popular to say, I'm so concerned about housing affordability. And here's one of the reasons, one of the many reasons, why housing is less affordable. And I think it's partially, it's execution of the team to, you know, do this, although you're only half the equation. Obviously, the applicant is the other half of the equation, and if they take time, you've got to take time. But the other is, I think, and this is for us up here to think about, is it's the complexity by which we now require applications to be judged. So it's, you know, we have, before you even get to building, we have an incredible amount of complexity that didn't exist a decade ago or two decades ago. And then, once you get to build, and this is obviously not part of the planning process, but then once you get to build and get a building permit, what you have to build is so significantly different than it was, you know, 30 years ago, 20 years ago. And all of that leads to higher, higher, higher costs. And then we sit up here and go, oh, we're really concerned about the costs. At some, at some point, I don't think you can have everything. At some point, you have to make value judgments. And I would love for this discussion to include things like, hey, this is why it takes so long, and if this were simpler, it could be shorter. Or if we didn't have to require this, or if we required this instead of that, or, you know, whatever. We ought to be looking everywhere for opportunities for this to be shorter, because again, the industry, the people that provide housing, this is their number one problem.
Mm-hmm. Dugely noted. And I think what's important that we have to take into consideration is the balance between the needs for our development community and understanding, completely understanding that time is money. And also knowing that we have expectations and rules and guidelines that we have to follow from the city, and that's based on our land development code and our comprehensive plan. So that's why those are really important discussions when we bring those matters to you, when we contemplate changes. We need to be able to explain how is this going to benefit not only the city, but how is it going to benefit our community in general.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer, you were next.
Yeah, can we get some data pre-COVID? Because I think you had skewed a little bit.
Well, starting at 2020, I mean, I think that's...
COVID.
Mm-hmm.
Pre-COVID would be nice. So 2018, 19. Because here's a couple of things I'm thinking. One is, when we went through the LDC, one thing we introduced was more administrative approvals, which was to shorten the time. And we are not seeing that with this data, and you don't have the information to tell us why this is happening right now. So...
I can bring that to you. I will tell you, if we, if we have more public hearings for a developer, that is going to take more time.
But I could argue that maybe the time was shorter pre-COVID when we were doing it that way. And now you're saying, we've doubled since COVID, we've doubled the weeks to almost a year, but yet we introduced administrative approvals by you and your department, which was to shorten the timeframe. And that... And that, this data does not show that that process change worked.
I can't, we can't do an apples to apples comparison because it's also a different land development code. So I can't come back to you and say, with, with the old code, it would have been this way. I mean, we, we just have to look at, from a starting point of after the land development code was, had a major update, everything changed. What I, I mean, we can certainly talk about it, but, but understand that the context is different. It, we were, people were operating under a different set of rules, and now those rules have changed. I absolutely hear what you're saying about the timeframes, and that's what I'm going to be spending this time trying to dig into. But it's, as an example, Josie and I started to look at some of our projects. We wanted to pull a couple of projects to just illustrate to the council the timeframe that it takes, because you really can't say categorically, it's going to take everybody this amount of time. So we started to look, and we had so many examples where there was an anomaly, well, that this happened. Oh, we can't find a good example. So we're still looking for better examples that we can bring you to kind of illustrate how much time it takes. But again, I will say that a number of those that I looked at, looking at the review time from the city and then going back to see how much time it took before we got a resubmital from the developer, they were notable. And it, it is complicated. So that's part of our challenge, too.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm still.
Go ahead.
So I challenge you back to make it uncomplicated and come back and tell us what's, what, what, maybe explain this data a little bit more. Because I will tell you, I get the same complaints that Mr. Marriott gets, especially because out West, that's where all the development's happening, that they're frustrated with the times it takes. And it is frustrating for me to come into this building and no one's in here. Until tonight, I saw two people in the permits desk. It's the first time I've seen that in, I don't know, years, a decade, it feels like? So I'm happy somebody came in, but that right there, something's got to change. And you've got to look at the data, and you've got either, otherwise, let's bring back the old, the old way, and let's reintroduce the old way again and not have you do that anymore, administrative approvals. Because it, it doesn't do us any good right now. It's not working.
If I could step in here, would you number on the number of administrative approvals? I think that would be useful for you. And we hear you. We heard that during the campaign. We heard it from you following the campaign regarding the concerns around this area. And that is what we're digging into. And I'm confident in what Jessica is looking at. We obviously don't have it here tonight.
Yeah. And when I say uncomplicated, I don't need to be, I don't need you to explain how complicated it is. I think we understand that because we review the more complicated ones that come up here. I think what we need to do is get data that makes it simplified, that's fair to show how much time it takes. Now, your data here, I could probably say, maybe your average weeks for approval probably includes waiting on the developer as well. I'm assume that as well. You should, you should probably break that up on that graph before bringing it up here, saying you waited 32 weeks for the developer and 15 weeks on us. A total of 47 weeks for it to go through the process. That kind of data is more insightful. But right now, the way that this looks like to me is this, this looks to me that we're waiting completely on the city for a very length of time.
I, I can bring those numbers back to you, but I will tell you, we're not going to get too deep in the weeds about why and how something was delayed.
Yeah, I'm not asking that. I'm just asking for intervals.
Sure.
That shows what the process is.
Sure. And I will also just note, Rob just showed me a, just a little graphic that we had about between 20 and 30 cases in 2019, which went up to between 50 and 70 in the, in the next years. So our development activity has increased triple, has tripled in the last four years.
Well, just so you know, there's been less permits pulled now than there was back then. So let's be careful with that kind of data as well, because I can tell you, we've had our highest building permits pulled pre-COVID than we do now. So if I was to compare that, to me, you're going back to the same length of time that it takes, but yet we, what we were sold was, this new process for administrative approval will shorten the time. And that's not what we're seeing with your data today. So if you can go back and look at your data and come back to that, yeah, because this, this is actually a big issue for me that I hear all the time around the developers getting upset through our process.
It's a perennial issue in every municipality. Every, every municipality.
Well, I, I don't want to be compared to other municipalities. I just want to say, we can do better.
Sure.
We're Arvada, so we could do better.
Yeah. We can try. Any other questions?
Yes. Sorry, we have two more lights. Councilmember Ambrose.
Sorry, opposite Councilor Pfeiffer, I almost actually wanted to ask how we do compare with other cities, because other municipalities are also dealing with the same external factors that we're dealing with. But I don't know how useful that'll be in reshaping your processes unless there's another city who is also working with the same comparable amount of greenfield that is quicker, but we don't have as much greenfield as anymore and other factors, if there is a comparable city and if they have different processes that have like solved the issue that all the external factors you're bringing up.
I don't think I could bring you a community that would be apples to apples comparisons. We would have to, have to do some digging on that. Every, every jurisdiction struggles with this. And every jurisdiction also has a different land development code and a different comprehensive plan. So their city councils are going to have different priorities. Not that development activity isn't a priority, but they, they're going to go at it a different way that's going to be unique to each municipality. So we can pull some examples, but I think we'll find that everybody does it a little bit different.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask about the aspect of that our greenfield is largely gone, and is that an issue that's talked about in the comprehensive plan of what we want to do with the little that's left that would be the best for Arvada?
So the 2014 comprehensive plan was not at the same place in terms of greenfield development. When we get to the new update, if that's going to be next year, which would be 10 years after the 2014 slash 2015 comprehensive plan, we will go into that and talk a little bit about it. I mean, it's, I, I think I've mentioned this when I talked about financial resiliency, that what we're going to see, right, what we see right now is a lot of development activity, and then that's going to level off. And then the development activity that we will have is going to be more complicated. It's going to be redevelopment, it's going to be retrofitting, it's going to be infill. And those are more complicated in nature.
Okay. And then my last question is that part of the process involves outside agencies, and I'm curious on developments that border up against other municipalities or Jefferson County, do we consult with them as part of the outside agencies to say, hey, we're putting in this, and it's right on your border, and they have some sort of input or, or is it like a heads up?
Yeah, no, it's a referral process. So similar to what we've seen with some of our projects, the same thing comes from other municipalities. So we get a, we will either send out a project and have, if it's touching Jefferson County's border, if it's touching Adams County's border, they will then submit comments back if they want to, to let us know if there's any potential impacts. And the same goes for them. We, it's a very iterative process. We all, all the jurisdictions do that.
Okay. That's good to know, because a lot of the citizens who have been coming to us have been talking about Jefferson County projects. And I was curious, just to establish that Jefferson County does consult us with projects that are on our border, but we don't have jurisdiction over.
Absolutely. So the example would be the 59th and McIntyre project. So we just submitted detailed comments, and that goes back to Jefferson County, and then it gets logged into their system, and you can view those online. I don't think they're available yet, but typically, you can go back and you can see exactly what questions we asked.
Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have several questions. Where does the Citizens CIP Committee come into play with your planning in the LDC?
It doesn't, but I can refer to, I believe, our public works staff. We have many of them in the audience. Maybe Jacqueline would want to weigh in on that.
I'll go ahead and kick it off. So obviously, it's been some time since the 2013, 2014 Citizens Capital Improvement Committee, but one part of the development review process led by our development engineering team is to look at all of our CIP plans. So when we talk about in the city council strategic plan to develop these implementation plans for the master plans you directed us to do, along with our ongoing active CIP, we're coordinating that through the development review process. So our development engineers are, are commenting on that and making sure that we're aware of capacity needs related to our infrastructure that need to be addressed through the process.
Thank you. So I'm just wondering if we could see a process map of the three steps, especially step number three. What I'm curious about is, does this go to each department one at a time? So first, it goes to utilities, and it goes to public works, and it goes so forth and so on? Or is it concurrent? And is it?
It's concurrent.
Okay.
We send out, so essentially, when we get a full application and they have all the materials that we need in order to send out a referral, we refer it out to everybody. So internally, to the different departments and to the external partners. And we give them a certain amount of time to submit comments back to us and then move on with the process. So, yeah.
Okay. And is this process paperless for the applicant, or do they have to come down with?
It is paperless. Paperless is a challenge. We'll talk about eTrackit another day. But it is, it is possible for all the documents, everything to be uploaded into Trackit, and then that's how we, that's how we monitor and also manage our permitting process and our development review process.
Thank you. And then my last question is, how does planning coordination work with the school districts? Because we were talking along 64th, and we have two schools. We have Awest, and then the name of the elementary school just went right, Fremont, thank you. Fremont. How are we coordinating that in terms of widening, changing, so forth?
So the school site itself, we have little discretion. The state actually oversees the planning process for schools to be built. So we can't come back and say, could you maybe make that a little taller or put another window on it? They're going to say no. When it comes to any infrastructure, any of those needs, we try very diligently always to coordinate with the school district about what's going on. So whether it's, if they're going to be, if there is a new school that's proposed to be built, let's say, they have to address all of those issues that would be impacting traffic, utilities, if we need a signal, if we need a new sewer system, whatever it is that we need, we're going to work with them and make sure that those issues get met. But it's just typically when we get into the site planning, we have very limited opportunity.
Just one more. And the reason I ask is the neighbors in, in my neighborhood, we had a challenge on 64th with parents and, and students accessing Awest and Fremont. On 64th, it was just a, a big mess in terms of traffic backups, and it kind of was a little dangerous. So that's why I'm asking.
And any ongoing, if it's an existing school site and we have those kinds of challenges, you're going to find that it's, it's planning, it's public works, it's the police department. Everybody's really trying to weigh in to address those needs, because obviously, you know, safety is, is a big factor. And we want to make sure that we're getting kids back and forth to school as safely as possible. Absolutely.
Councilmember Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have two ideas for us to consider, I'd like us to think about. One is around community engagement and involvement through all this planning process that we go through. This is something I hear a lot about from my constituents. I hear frustration, I hear that they're disconnected from the process and sometimes feel disempowered in the process. And so I would love, as we are looking at revising our comp plan, to at least explore other models out there. And the one that, that I'm interested in looking at, and I'm sure there are others, is San Diego's. I don't know if you're familiar with that, with the community planning groups that they have, they're neighborhood based. So this is very much local power we're talking about, that really the starts from the neighborhood. So the proposals have to go through these community-based groups first. And it's not like our current neighborhood system where the developer runs the meeting. It's these appointed neighborhood groups that run the meeting. And then they advise up to the Planning Commission, and then that gets on up to the city council on those kind of decisions. So I think that's an interesting model that I would be curious for us to explore, at least, to see if that, how that works for San Diego and other similar types of systems out in other communities. But I think that, in my mind, that may help, help our residents feel more empowered in that process, if they have a voice at the very local level through that process. And then the second thing I'd like us to consider is looking at more environmental impacts on our development decisions. We have had a number of decisions that we've made in my two years coming up here, and I've felt like we have not had a really good opportunity to look at things like air quality, water use, those kind of pieces that significantly impact our whole community. And so I know that there are also examples out there of where comprehensive plans have actually impact analysis as part of those plans, and then it goes down into the land development code itself. And so that we're looking at those analyses. And I think the other important component of that is the cumulative analyses. While we may look at one project and say that here's the base level traffic before that project comes in, here's the additional traffic that's coming from that project, but what's happening on the other developments around that, and what's the cumulative traffic impact as that project's being approved and other projects similarly in that same timeline? So I'd like to make sure that we're, we're looking at those cumulative impacts and, and requiring some environmental impact analyses and mitigation as part of, of our lenses that we're looking through. And then finally, I know our sustainability division is working on a climate action plan right now. And so my hope is that that will very much integrate it into our comprehensive plan. And I appreciate Rob's description earlier of how our comprehensive plan has evolved and changed over time to meet our community needs. And I know some of our neighboring communities like Lakewood and Fort Collins have integrated sustainability and resiliency as part of those priorities in their comprehensive plans. And so I would like us to be looking at that as well.
Those are all really interesting, and we will look into the San Diego model. I will say that a lot of what you described, Councilmember Mormon, is very similar to California's CEQA process, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. And I will tell you, working in California for seven years, that there are significant trade-offs that we need to expect. One of those will be time, and the second will be money. So when we talk about competing interests and even within the council members, saying we want to prioritize getting developers through this process and be consistent, and we want to layer on research and impact analysis and mitigation strategies, that will double to triple the cost of a development project and will significantly lengthen the amount of time and resources, because we don't have CEQA planners here. We'd have to bring in folks that understand that.
Sure. I, I understand that. But Lakewood's doing it, so I'd like us to look and see how they're doing and what are their timelines compared to.
Sure. Yeah. And I think a lot of, of these conversations will be really helpful, too, as we get into the comprehensive planning process and think about what the impacts could be on the land development code, so we can talk about trade-offs and what those costs are. Thank you.
You. Councilmember Faray?
I was lost in your thoughts of environmental conversation, and I lost what I was going to ask. So the concept plan versus formal application, I'm wondering, when you look at the timelines, is there a significant jump from concept plan to formal application? Meaning, how rigorous are we looking into the concept plan versus formal application? Some of the feedback that I've heard is that it's causing longer time because of the two-step process versus doing it kind of all at once and having iterative feedback.
Concept plans or a pre-application doesn't always result in a project. So when they go through the pre-application process, it's really, the, the point is to inform. We want to learn what may be happening on that site. We want to share that with the developer to, to be able to make an informed decision. They may not come back after they hear about the site itself. There may be other factors that they say, no, this is just not the one. They may go back and try to do a number of things to try and put together a development application. I think really the intention is, is that we want to provide as little uncertainty as possible for them if they choose to go down that path. They don't, you know, they could take that risk without having a pre-application meeting, but then they're just going to get that information when they submit formally. So I think it's a, it's, I mean, they will get that information one way or the other. I, I've seen this as a real courtesy to the development community so that they're aware of what to expect if they want to go down that path with that particular project.
Awesome.
But it's a good, good question.
The final question I had was around the feedback that applicants are getting. I've heard and seen personally through some of my remodel of my house was, we have different feedback from different people that sometimes aren't caught. So an inspector, for example, might come out and say, everything looks good except for this. And then a new inspector comes out and says, oh, but you missed this, but we didn't. And so that causes a bunch of setbacks, which in turn causes a lot of delay in money. So I'm just wondering, as you're reviewing some of this process internally to, to fast-track some of these timelines, if that is a variable in terms of process flow and individual personnel?
I'm assuming that often when you're hearing that, that's when they, when they've submitted a, a building, they have a building permit, and they're building the project, which is different than if they're submitting for the overall project approval itself. And again, you know, we really strive to be consistent. So if there's a, if there's a situation where one inspector is saying, you didn't finish that wall correctly, or you didn't put in the vent the way you should have, or whatever, and then somebody else comes in and backtracks or takes them down another path, I'd really like to hear that, because we want to make sure that our inspectors understand how to interpret the building codes and how to bring that information to our customers so that interpret the building codes and how to bring that information to our customers so that it's understandable and that we're not wasting their time. So I would definitely like to hear about that, and that's something that our building official takes really seriously. So that's a training opportunity.
I think if we go backwards into the process and review, even some of the feedback that they can get can be conflicting or sometimes overlooked. And so I think there might just be, since there's not one assigned case manager, so to speak, for that development, it seems like sometimes there can be different feedback from the proposal and different interpretations. And so I'm just wondering, I'm just offering that feedback as do you review your internal processes of how do we mitigate that from different perspectives of your teammates?
Thanks for the question. I will say that we do have one, one person that's responsible for the project. The project manager is the planner. So they're the one that takes all of the information and condenses it and puts it into those comment letters. So if there's a place where there's a discrepancy, or somebody is saying one thing and somebody says something completely different, again, I'd like to know that, because our planners should not be putting that information into a letter and saying, good luck, try to figure that one out. We should really, the whole point is to try and demystify this and to let people know, A, B, C, D, and once you do this, you can get a permit. So, yeah, we really want to hear about that. And, and I will say, we've been doing monthly customer surveys, so based on all the permits we get, we send out that survey to our contractors, to our builders. And we've had very, very good survey results month after month after year. And I'm happy to share those if you guys haven't seen those. But again, we need to know what the problem is so that we can fix it. And if we're not hearing that, then that's an issue. So thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Yeah, and thank you for this presentation. I know we're not easy sometimes, so I think you're doing great.
You guys are great. Any other questions?
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I was just doing some calculations, looking at the graphs. So the days are the number of days that, working days that it takes for the city to be able to respond to an application at that point in the process, right?
So the, the graph on the left is the average time for approval. Those are days, and that is based on, or sorry, this is for review. So this is how much time it's taking us to review a project. It's, it, when we get, and this is also broken down by first, second, and that third or decision review. So you can see, obviously, you know, we're hoping that really the first and second times here, ideally, we would love to be able to get these out and have just two cycles. Sometimes it takes three, sometimes it takes one. You know, our development community is, they're going to, they're going to do well in certain areas and not in others. But yes, generally, you'll see that it's taking 28 days for the first review, 34 for the second, and 19, and that was in 2023.
Right, and then the second graph includes the time, the weeks of approval includes the time from the developer, that you're waiting for the developer to be like, okay, we approved your concept, now we're waiting for your second, we approved your second, now we're waiting for your third. So that, so the first chart is just city data, and the second chart is developer and city data for the time to review, correct?
Yes, and it's for the whole project.
Okay, so what I, I converted the first chart into weeks, and so what I found is that the city's weeks of approval time for the entire three steps of the process in 2020 was 10 weeks, and 2021 was 13.4 weeks, and 2022 was 17 weeks, and then in 2023 was 16 weeks. So that's the amount of time that the city has taken, and at the same time, developers have taken 17 weeks in 2020, 20 weeks in 2021, 21 weeks in 2022, and then this year, they jumped to 31 weeks in 2023. So I think for future presentations, making sure that we're always looking apples-to-apples so that we can look at this and say, okay, well, yeah, I mean, the city went from last year taking 17 weeks, and now on average, it only takes 16 weeks, but the developers on average last year took 21 weeks, and now they're taking 31 weeks, will really help us assess, you know, what, because this is an issue everybody on council has heard about, the approval process, and to be able to have the fact back, facts back to the community to say, okay, this is, you know, we've actually improved by one week from year to year, and we continue to improve, and here's some more process improvement ideas we have for this, because this is a high concern for people living in Arvada.
Yep, we'll take care of that next time. Thank you.
I see no more lights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time this evening. We really appreciate it. We'll be back. Actually, I'll see you next week. We're going to be doing a workshop on housing, so Carrie and her team will be here, and we'll go through not quite the same, but interesting stuff. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. All right. Turn it over to the team. Do we have any more updates or reports? Ms. Gillis?
Councilmember Ambrose. Bravo.
Yeah, interesting. Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.